All the meeting to order at 6:33. And first thing I'd like to do is just welcome everybody to the meeting via Zoom. We had, I think successfully had a few meetings, hybrid, that worked out okay, but with given the numbers and things like this, I think we'll talk about, sign on tonight's agenda, maybe we can talk about it later on, about just closing down the public meetings, you know, in-person meetings and going straight with hybrid if we can. There are some, some concerns coming up about town meetings and things like that, how to do that strictly online, but we can, we can get that information later. But the, really the point is to welcome everybody here tonight. Thank you for attending. And-
Angus, can I make a couple of changes to the agenda?
Sure.
Can we add Sheri and Scott from CRAD to give us an update on the help, for the health district? And can we give the audience of citizens an opportunity to talk before we get into the meeting? Seeing we have a large group here tonight?
That'd be great. So we can, so we'll add CRAD as item number two.
Yep.
And then we'll move item number five to item number three.
Yep. Thank you.
We'll need a second on that, Jim.
A second bet.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, terrific. Scott and Sheri, thank you so much for coming back again. It seems like we talk to each other once or twice every day, and I appreciate your, your coming again tonight to fill us in, given, given where we sit right now. I think it's good for everyone to hear from you directly. So you've got the floor. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you Angus. Yeah, it's been, it's been crazy. We all watch the news, see what's happening nationally. Certainly in the state of Connecticut, we're not in a place we thought we may be this time of year. Certainly the, the rate of transmission and the spread is currently doubling in most areas, if not tripling. Deep Rivers up to 36 cases, as Angus alluded to. We had three new cases today. I believe I have another one or two for you a little bit later Angus. So not uncommon, we're seeing this throughout the state, certainly throughout the district, various levels, but I would anticipate Deep River certainly to be in the orange status this Thursday, if not the red, and most certainly be in the red status the following week, as we have a high amount of cases this week, which will count towards the next set of data the following Thursday. So just to give you a brief district overview where we're at with cases, we got 146 in Clinton, 97 in Old Saybrook, 76 in Hattam, 36 in Deep River, and 25 in Chester. The good news about the data is that relative, relatively few, if any, have been hospitalized at this point. We did have a recent hospitalization in Deep River. Hopefully that person fares well. But the good news is still, we're still seeing that this virus, although it's highly transmissible, the majority of people are not getting ill. That said, we're still seeing about eight to 10 deaths a day, but these are still primarily people, the elderly with high comorbidities. So that is good news, but the bad news is we know as this continues to spread, that this virus is going to start to affect more people in the bracket that can succumb to the virus. So it's very important that we limit community spread. I think it's a combination of a little bit of getting COVID kind of non-compliance, so to speak. I don't mean that in Deep River in general. I think the, people are getting tired. It's COVID fatigue. I think that's certainly fueling the fire here, but also it's just this strain of the virus is just much more transmissible than other strains. So we're in a different spot now. So when we combine that with heading it into the winter months, losing this nice weather opportunity, we certainly face a difficult time this winter, all of us together. In Deep River, your school systems made the decision, as you know about yesterday, to go to remote. A lot of that decision was based on cases, but also a good majority was based on staffing levels and the ability to operate in the schools. And that's kind of what's happening throughout the district and throughout a lot of the schools. They may not have a lot of transmission and happening in the schools, but when you're isolating 130 kids, seven to 10 teachers, the ability to operate in that school is very difficult. And not only that, when they become shorthanded, we start to question whether the mitigation efforts that we know they have been doing can continue. So there's a lot on the plate. You know, my advice to residents is just, you know, stay as safe as you can, limit trips outdoors, and you know, the mask wearing is always going to be that key point here. There's a reason we're doing a lot worse than a lot of countries. And I have to say, the majority of that has to be lack of people following essential guidelines. Many are, but not enough. And apparently by the numbers, you know, that, that's sadly the case right now. But Sheri will talk to you a little bit about what we're seeing in families and the high rate of transmission that's happening throughout families now. We can't really explain it because in the spring, one person would get it in a family, and it was very unlikely that it went to the other family members. And in this wave of COVID, we're seeing just the opposite. Once one kid or one parent gets it, it seems like a majority of the families getting that. So we don't know if it's the virus itself, or the families aren't doing the right things, knowing that they have an infected member of their household living with them. So it could be a combination of both as well. Contact tracing is continuing. Sheri will touch on that. And the only other thing I'd like to say is, you know, you gotta put where we're at in perspective, and we can still say, even with Deep Rivers rising cases, we are still in one of the safer bubbles in the state, and certainly Middlesex County is doing very well compared to other portions of the state. When we talk about case rates and Deep River might be 15 this week, you have to remember that it's all equal when you hear these results now. So a city like New London, you may hear, woo, they got 1,000 cases, but their case rate's 45 per 100,000 two-week average. So they have triple the case rate based on population than a place like Deep River. And a place like Chester, they have six times the case rate. So we are still much safer in these little bubbles than we would be in a city setting. And a lot of that is just due to density and people not quite traveling as much, certainly in Chester and Hattam and Deep River. But that said, when you get one or two family cases in Deep River, and that times four or five, then you're at eight. And with your little population, these little family outbreaks are really going to make those numbers look a lot worse than they are. So it's just important to keep that in mind. We do monitor that because if we were getting seven to 10 cases in Deep River, and they were all different families, I'd be a heck of a lot more concerned than two families with five cases at this point. So that means a lot of people still are doing a great job. Sheri, you want to touch on contact tracing?
Hey Scott, real briefly, we've got a lot of people on tonight that haven't seen you before.
Oh.
And could you identify yourself and what CRAD is and all that real quick, just so everybody knows who this guy is?
Scott Martinson, I'm the Director of Health of CRAD. I took over a few years ago. I did start CRAD in 2006 with Deep River, Old Saybrook, and Chester. Over the past 10 years or so, we added Hattam and Chester, rather. We started with Deep River, Saber, Clinton, added Hattam and Chester. Been a sanitarian for about 15 years, Director of Health, in all sorts of positions for about 10. Little bio, I got a double masters, I got a masters in public health, masters in healthcare administration, two kids, two college kids that have been sent home to me that are living with me now, and dog and a cat and a lovely wife. So certainly, I'm blessed to have a great staff that's been around for about 15 years with me. And the next person talking, Sheri, has really been my left and right arm throughout this pandemic. And one thing I've learned is that the field of public health nursing will never be the same. They truly are heroes. She hasn't had a day off in nine months, that includes weekends, but we're grinding. You know, this is what we do. We're going to have to do everything we can in our short window, but the one thing I always tell people, and the reason we don't go totally insane, is people have to remember this will end. And that I can almost guarantee you. And it'll probably not end the way people think it will be, like a light switch, but once people start getting vaccinated, which will probably happen at the end of December, January, if I'm optimistic with critical workforce, and once we can finally say, hey, we vaccinated our, our 65 and up, the people in nursing homes, our assisted living population, we're going to be in a much better spot as a community. Because as I said, that's where the people are still dying. So once we can get that, we're just going to have to use our mitigation efforts to keep going. And then I think we'll be at a point where we'll be much better off by the time we talk next year. So it's going to be a long, long winter, but I think we can make it. I really do. Sheri, what do you got?
What does, what does CR, what's this CRAD stand for?
Connecticut River Area Health District.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheri. I'm the public health nurse for CRAD. I've been part-time for nine years and full-time for three. And my background history is I was infection preventionist nurse. So, and I'm a major in nursing with my BS and a minor in biology. So that's where my background comes from. So contact tracing, I do with every positive case that I get. And that includes not only those that I get from my database, which is what this type of testing is mandatory reportable to the state and comes to us confidentially, like it does every other infectious disease that we follow up on. But, and also we collaborate with all the schools, all the, yeah, skilled nursing facilities, all the assisted livings, and any other community public that calls us and tells us that they know of a positive. We confirm it and then follow up to contain it by finding out where those people were, whether they traveled, whether they had, sorry, a Halloween party, whether they went to one, whether, you know, where they were exposed, to try to figure out where it came from. And also, since they've been sick, the couple of days before they were sick, who else they were in contact with, so that we can advise them and give them guidance to break that chain of spread of the infection. So that's what we do in contact tracing. We strongly encourage you to get a flu vaccine this year, because we are concerned with the combination of people getting ill with either or, or both, the flu and COVID. We are still giving flu vaccines. We started with drive-throughs in October. We've been doing weekly outside the office walk-ups. And now because it's cold and people really are, don't want to be standing outside in the cold, I'm doing drive-ups. So starting tomorrow night, and Wednesday's from 5:00 to 7:00, you can drive up to our office, and myself and a couple of other nurses will come out and vaccinate you right in your car.
Where is that?
That's at 455 Boston Prose Road, which is at the train station. That's our office. And you can pre-register at our website, which is CRAD, C-R-A-H-D.org. It's right on the front page is our registration. And good news, so that you know, we're also preparing for the next steps of COVID vaccination. We have done our enrollment in the COVP process, which allows us to be able to receive the federal asset of COVID vaccination, once it becomes available. So we are all set and have our numbers and know who our first responders are that we'll be starting with, and go from there. And the last thing I want to let you know is that we coordinated with the Governor's Office to set up a free testing from a community health center right here in Old Saybrook, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:00, right at the Saybrook Point by the miniature golf. It's no cost, no appointment, drive-through, first come, first served. Any age, because CVSs are only doing anybody above 12, and don't do children, but community health center will.
You know how they're doing, how they're doing with the drive-throughs, because I heard-
They're doing phenomenal. Hundreds and hundreds of people every day are getting tested. And they have it very well coordinated. Our emergency manager director slash chief has the logistics down, and they're doing very well.
Excellent.
A good question someone asked, let's see, are we doing-
No.
Necessary, absolutely.
Symptoms are not necessary, and nor is a doctor's order. It's just go and go in line and say you want the test and you're able to get it.
I have personally, I know Sheri and Scott and everybody regularly, see, I've, I've gone three or four times to the CHC in Middletown, and it's, it's painless. You have to fill out a little form, and by the time you get up to the nurses and/or doctors that do it, it's, it's quick. And depending on how long the line is, it's, it's, it's a quick, the actual test is very quick. So-
And you can get your results by a text, you can get it by email, or you can actually open up your own MyChart account with Quest Laboratory, and so you can get it all three ways.
Is the, so I know on the website, when you go to the website with CHC, it does have a registration tab. Is that, so that's not necessary to register? You just fill it? Doesn't help you or hurt you to-
No, the community health center in Middletown will take appointments, and you can, you can get an appointment with a particular time, but not our pop-up in Saybrook.
Okay. And I think CHC is going to be in Chester again on next Tuesday, at the St. Joseph's parking lot. And I think that's from 9:00 until 1:00 next Tuesday. So if anyone needs to go there, a little bit closer, that's the place. Listen, I just want to say thank you to everything that you guys do. I appreciate your coming to these meetings to help, to help spread the word of what, what's happening and, and how best the community can, can respond to what's happening. But I also, I know that you guys are burning the candle on both ends and the middle, and I appreciate it, really very much appreciate what you're doing for us and for all of the towns. And what's fascinating to me, or interesting to me, is that the way this district is made up, you're working with Region Four, so, but Essex also has their own health director, and the same thing up in Hattam. It's really, you guys are doing Roman's work, and it's very much appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thanks, thanks for the report.
We have good partnerships, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Great community in Deep River. And please, anyone out there, just reach out to us, or Angus, anytime we're here. There's no question that's too silly. I've been asking questions, the same questions for six months now sometimes, and it just, the amount of information out there can get so overwhelming that we are in a good spot to kind of help you weed through some of that stuff if you have specifics. So don't, don't feel bashful to reach out anytime, anybody. Thank you.
Well, here's a, here's a silly one, and I don't want to take up much time on silly ones, but this, what, what might seem silly to some is important to others. Let's say, let's say a 17-year-old fella goes to work, somebody at work tests, in a restaurant, somebody in that restaurant tests positive, he had direct contact with them, now he's got a quarantine for two weeks, he can't be in school, but that's remote anyway. But what does that quarantine at home mean? Should he be locked in his bedroom with a directory to the bathroom and just food dropped off at his door? Or, you know, how does that quarantine really shape up?
Well, him as a contact, he's not a case, right? He's a contact.
Yep.
So as a contact that has been exposed to a case, he could technically convert from being negative for COVID to positive for COVID for 14 days. Everybody in his family is, has no public health requirements. They can, his siblings, his parents can all come and go as they choose and continue to work as normal. The family has two choices. One, you know, they could encourage that 17-year-old to stay in his room on his computer and drop off meals, and not expose the rest of the family, because he potentially could be changing at any moment. And there'd be 48 hours where you wouldn't know that the child is already infectious. And then if they, if they do keep him in his room, then if he converts to being positive, then the rest of the family would avoid becoming contacts themselves. But if he continues to live amongst the whole house, then the whole house potentially would become isolated.
Okay.
So, you know, and with that 17-year-old, because of where he works, you know, we would also encourage him to get tested 48 hours to, you know, to 96 hours after his exposure to that contact, because he also could be an asymptomatic carrier. And then that would allow us as another tool to intervene more quickly in all the people that he had contact with. So yes, it does get complicated, and that's why we take every case-by-case scenario. And one of the things that everybody needs to know is that when there's any question of a scenario, we have experts at the state, Dr. Lynn Sosa, who is an excellent epidemiologist who communicates very effectively, and we will review those with her. So we don't, you know, we use the experts that we have to make the tough decisions.
Thank you.
I can answer the question about the effectiveness of the test.
Yeah.
There's two different types of tests. There's the antigen test, which everybody talks about as the rapid test. And the rapid test really is only to be used effectively for those who are symptomatic within the first seven days of their disease. That measures the proteins that are being excreted by the virus. And if that's a positive test, then it's an effective measure for confirming a case. But if it's negative, then it needs to be confirmed by a PCR or nucleic acid test, which measures the RNA, the existence of the RNA in the body of the COVID. So if you get a negative rapid, it doesn't tell you a whole lot. So the golden standard is the PCR test, and that is very effective.
Thanks. And Brett Tonton has said to everyone, I don't know if everyone sees the chart or the chat, but people who want to be tested, who don't exhibit symptoms can also receive testing by visiting covidtesting.ynhhs.org. Thank you for that.
Yale is another excellent spot, yep.
Okay. If everyone is okay, I'd say thank you, and we can move on.
Thank you Sheri. Thank you Scott.
All right. Nice seeing you all. Take care.
We'll talk to you soon.
All right.
Okay. Don't forget, we have to move back to that. Okay, the next item on the agenda, based on our, Dwayne's motion and acceptance, is to move the audience of citizens to now. We've got a lot of people here, so I appreciate your patience. Let's, let's hear from our audience of citizens. If someone wants to raise their hands, maybe I could see them? Seraphika, there you go.
I just, I have a comment about nominations. I don't know if you want to wait until you get to that, or what?
No, that's why we moved the audience of citizens up.
Well, let me just start my thing. I'm sorry I wrote this down, and so it's going to sound canned. I hate, as much as people think I'm a social person, those of you who know me, hate public speaking.
Me too.
And I want everybody to know that, like, this is, it's, it's hard for people to speak up. So I'm going to try to speak up for other people that are less brave than me. So my voice is shaking because I hate public speaking, and it's written down. So-
Good job so far.
So-
Nervous.
Thank you. When I learned this morning that Mr. Donnie Sampson was nominated for Assistant Constable, I followed up about his comportment towards me and others in a peaceful vigil for Black Lives Matter. I reached out to Mr. Sampson so I could be fully informed of his position. We had a cordial exchange of ideas. Sorry, people are texting me in the mail. While I'm satisfied that Mr. Sampson promised to comport himself honorably, I have no doubt he will attempt to do that. It is important that all of us as Americans make sure that this conversation continues. I, I wanted the record to show that this conversation should continue. And at the risk of getting ahead of myself, I would even like to suggest that possibly one of the things this budding ethics committee might consider is behavior during peaceful vigils. I think this is a conversation that needs to take place, not just here, in, in every town across the country. This was a beginning. This was a beginning of a good conversation, but the conversation should continue. And thank you, everyone, for listening.
Thank you Sarah.
Thank you Sarah.
That was, that was well said, and I appreciate you and Don having a conversation today. I see Diane Adams is got her hand up. Don't forget to unmute.
No, I was just like, oh, I, I think I clicked the wrong thing.
Oh, okay.
It's her hand.
All right, I see Sue's got her hand up.
Hubens.
Yep.
Okay. All right, this person that you have nominated as a constable or assistant constable, okay, I wasn't there, but my understanding was that at a JEDI Center Vigil for Black Lives Matter, he tried to run his truck into a group of peaceful vigil people? And I'm sorry, that's unacceptable in a person that's going to be named as an assistant constable. That's just unacceptable behavior. I mean, am I wrong here? Is my understanding incorrect?
I think that, you know, I wasn't there either. Sarah was there, and there were other folks here that were there. I have spoken with Sarah, I've spoken with a couple of other folks that were in attendance, and I've spoken with Don, and I've spoken with the police officer who issued Don his summons. I don't believe that there was any attempt to drive into anyone. I think Don did a bad job parking his car. Don did a bad job in many different ways. He should not have gotten out of the car in the first place. He should not have confronted people. But we have, you know, we have this happening across the country, from both sides of the aisle, people are confronting each other, and that's, it's a shame.
But my point of view-
I don't believe that, that Don tried to run anyone over. I think that if he had-
No, I don't either. But my point of view is that there should be no reaction to a Black Lives Matter vigil.
Okay.
That someone should-
I don't disagree with you Susan. I, my Thanksgivings have been, my, all of my family parties are completely divided. And we have got, you know, in my family, we're arguing about this. And, you know, I've made, I've made argument after argument about responding to this all lives matter nonsense. Well, you know what, in, when they wrote the Declaration of Independence, the second paragraph begins with, "All men are created equal." Well, you know what, at that time, I don't think they were talking about women. I don't think they were talking about black people. I don't think they were talking about a lot of folks. And I say, and I say, listen, in 1963, when you stood up in grammar school and said the Pledge of Allegiance, and you said, and that ended with, "And liberty and justice for all." At that time, my black friends, we couldn't travel to South Carolina and eat in the same restaurant. So I, I hear what you're saying, but there are-
Please let me finish.
But I sit across my Thanksgiving table and have these arguments.
Please let me finish, okay?
I thought you were finished. I apologize.
All I'm saying, all I'm saying is that if you are hiring a constable, you don't want him to be acting out on his feelings. you don't want him to be acting out on his feelings. I mean, it's okay at your Thanksgiving dinner table. It's happened at mine as well. But you don't want a constable doing this in his professional life.
That was not, and I'm not defending his actions, but I am telling you that was not in his professional life. That was simply on his way.
If I may continue, how do you know that in the heat of the moment, it won't be expressed again?
Well, I want to make sure you're finished.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Number one, you don't, you expect that, you expect good behavior from everyone that you hire and that everyone that you live with around your community. But I want people to understand that this special constable role is not an enforcement role in any way. He's hired and has worked for many years to direct traffic at car crashes, at fires, and at parades. That's his, that's his capacity as a special constable. And that's what he's done for many years. That's what he has done for the past two years after this incident. There has been no incident since then. So I appreciate your concern, and we'll certainly address it. And I'm sure there are other folks that have other things to say. Diane?
I wasn't going to say anything, but since I was there the evening in question, I will say that I did not feel like I was going to be run over that evening, that I was in danger of the truck actually running into me, although I did feel that the truck came at me, and it frightened me. Now, in this time of concerns about police brutality, I think we're trying to work towards people feeling better about police, about those in charge. And it was, it was a very frightening situation, not just the truck, but because of, there was, there were, there were voices raised. I thought someone was going to come to blows. And I guess, I in general feel very positive towards police people, but that was not a situation where I, where I felt positive towards a person. He was not in a position of authority at that time, but he, but I feel that if he is to become, if he is to be officially a constable, that that would be in a position of authority. And it's, I have concerns.
I get it. And I appreciate that. I want to make sure that you understand. He has been a special constable in town for twenty or thirty years. So it's, but this is not a new appointment.
Yeah, to, you know, elaborate a little bit on what Angus was saying. He's not, he's not driving around in a police cruiser. He's not armed. He's not doing law enforcement. I'm not, I'm not by any way, shape, or form justifying his actions. But the special constable position is just that. It's basically directing traffic at fire department or ambulance incidences. And again, I'm not, I'm not condoning what he did by any way, shape, or form, but I just want everybody to know that he is not like our three paid law enforcement constables. He is not, he is not one of them. So I just wanted to clarify that a little bit.
Thanks. I saw Charlie had his hand up.
Yeah, just real quick, I, one, this is a personal thing, is honestly, I've got Sarah's back on that. I understand exactly where she's at. I don't think that's, I think we all agree that's not acceptable behavior. I was really supportive of her idea of communication as a role in being involved in, I guess, in democratic politics in the town. I think it would go a long way if people were communicative between law enforcement and the, I don't know, call it left side. I like that idea quite a bit. I think that could go a long way in having people feel more comfortable in that space. One of the things with this incident is it kind of reinforces potential stereotypes that may not be existent in our community, but still are something that our side of the aisle feel is out there. And I really, I like the idea of communication. I think that's something we should take an emphasis on in the future. And again, I support Sarah. I also support democratic constitutional government. So, you know, you guys do what you need to do. But again, I really like the idea of deflating that balloon with communication from law enforcement. I think that would be fantastic.
Thanks, Sheri.
That's it.
Sarah, I don't see anyone else who's standing up, so go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the reason this is coming up now is because of the renomination. Because it was my understanding that he would be stepping down from this position. And I guess I misunderstood that, where there was some sort of miscommunication, and that's why it's coming up now. People are wondering, why is it coming up now, after?
Oh, now's the time.
So.
My hand is up, Angus.
I see Claire and Wendy. I don't know who just said that.
Jane.
Jane, okay, thank you, Jane. Let's go with Claire. Your hand has been up for a while.
Yeah, I just wanted to reinforce what Sarah has said. I think this dialogue has to take place across the country. And in some ways, I'm really glad that we've had this opportunity to bring this down to a local level. And without people having to be on different sides of this issue, I think it's, it's just good that everyone would come together and open up a dialogue for this without being characterized one way or another. I mean, I think that's part of the problem, that we have been characterized and stereotyped. I think Sarah, I admire her for reaching out to Mr. Sampson today and having that discussion. I have concerns about him if there isn't any, if there is any implicit bias here. I know that implicit bias training will be available to police and law enforcement, and I hope that that opportunity will be open for him. But I do think that Sarah has set the right tone in discussing this and bringing the issue forward. So I just wanted to thank her for that. And thank you too, Angus, for hearing everybody's concerns about this.
Absolutely.
Wendy Fish, you were next. Thank you, Claire.
Sorry, I'm not going to speak about reaching across the aisle because I don't think this is something that has to do with that. It's, I think Sarah went above and beyond. I don't think that, I'm going to just speak to how I feel as a citizen. I know this person is not, does not apparently have authority. But, you know, if I am somebody that, you know, if there's a parade, I've taken part in vigils and parades in this town in Chester, and I've helped arrange them. If this person is involved in that, I won't trust them. This person has lost my trust. Actions, his actions have consequences. There is causal accountability here. And somebody that does this sort of thing, I don't think should be rewarded with the town entrusting him. I just don't, I think, I think communication and all of that is wonderful, but he should not be rewarded by these very, very, I think those are very serious actions. Intimidation, you know, and verbal assault, I think is, I think is very serious. And I wouldn't accept that from, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give somebody the job, that kind of a job, if they have that kind of a record. So, in public. I just don't think that that's the right comportment to have. So that's my piece. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. Let's see, Jane, you were next on the line.
I've known Donnie for a long time and have always liked him. But if there are questions, why don't you table it and look into whatever, however you do it, and bring it up again?
Thank you. Good advice. Jack, Sarah H., I see you, but Jack Baldwin has had his hand up for a while, and I'm not sure if it's up or if he, and I see Wendy wants to come back. Okay.
My turn?
Yep.
Okay, hey, I don't really know too much about what the constables do. Is it just the, the traffic and stuff like that, it scenes, incidences, or parades? Do they have any other type of duties?
No, not effectively. It's a role that has been in existence for a really long time.
Right.
Over that course of that time, most of the, most of the role has dissipated to where it's really just traffic control.
If you go to a fire incident or an accident incident or whatever, you will see those, those special constables in their own vehicles directing traffic away from or around an incident. That's, that's, that, those are those people that you see in town when the fire trucks go flying by and you can't go down your road for whatever reason. They're the ones that are directing traffic, and that's what, that's what they, that's what they do in town now.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I just didn't know that their capabilities, you know, if they could hand out speeding tickets, that'd be great too, maybe.
They have no authorization to do anything.
Okay, thanks. Sorry for asking such a dumb question.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's see. Yep, Dwayne?
I just want to chime in a little bit here. I was not there the evening that this thing happened. I respect the people that were protesting that evening. I respect the constables that do what they do. I'm not being discriminatory towards them, but if you look at all the gentlemen that are on the list, they're all older gentlemen that are coming out, putting their time from their family out in harm's way. Again, I do not condone what Mr. Sampson did that evening. I've known Mr. Sampson pretty much my whole life, like Jim has and Jane. Again, I do not condone what he did, but I was not there, so I can't pass judgment on it. But what I think we have to do as a community here is we have to try to move forward and put some of this negativity on all sides behind us, right, wrong, indifferent, and we all have to start supporting each other. And the first step would be to have Mr. Sampson, as he's already started dialogue with Sarah, is to have some dialogue with some other people. And, you know, make sure that he's doing it properly and without respecting, with respecting everybody and their protest that they're allowed to do. It just, you know, we have, we have to move on for the better part of Deep River here. This should not be a political problem here. What side of the aisle you're on, it should make a difference. We're all Deep River residents. We all live here for a reason, because it's a beautiful town. So that's just my two cents. Again, I do not condone what Mr. Sampson did, but I believe in second chances also. And I think that Mr. Sampson has paid the price by getting arrested and paying his fine and being penalized, the scrutiny that he had in the town. But it's time to move on for him and us as town residents.
Just to speak, I see you, Susan. Thank you. There's three, four people in front of you, and Chris Fish, I see you too. I will just, I want to just comment on that. Yes, most of these special constables are older folks who, as their abilities to fight fires diminish, they want to continue to be involved in the, in the, in the community and in this particular type of role. And this is how they, how they're able to do that. The other question that came up a little bit, this is not, this, Don was reappointed last year too. This is, I think we're going on three years since, since here, two and a half years. This is, this will be his second reappointment since then. And let's see. There's a whole lot more to say, but let's just move on. Sarah H., you're next in the line. Thanks. Sorry for, thanks for your patience.
Hi, thank you for taking the time to hear me. I just wanted to reiterate what Wendy said. I feel that Sarah really went above and beyond in reaching out to him. But one thing it's important to do is to separate personal interactions from professional standards. And, you know, Dwayne, I agree with you. People deserve second chances. They should have a place and a role in our community. I don't know if this is the right one, based on his behavior. You know, I think you, there are some mistakes you make where you may need to look at following a different professional path. I think it's really important to also look at, when someone makes a mistake, have they actually, you know, I don't know, I'm not, this is not me casting judgment or blame on him. I don't know what's happened, but it's important to ask the questions. Did he make reparations? What work did he do after making such an epic mistake? I mean, intimidation, that's not, that's not a light matter. That is something where you lose a lot of community trust. That can fracture a community. You know, we're touching on issues of safety and freedom of speech. This, that's a big deal. So when that happens, it's important that we have these community conversations, but it's really important too, to hold people to the expectation that they're the ones doing the work, not their victims. And I'm hearing that the people who were affected have done a lot of work to reach out and start these conversations. But has he, of his own initiative, you know, taken any conflict management courses or bias? You know, done any bias programs? What has he done to show that he is, you know, working his way back into public trust? And I think that should just be a standard we hold everybody to. That's not personal against him. But if, you know, if someone does something that causes harm, they need to be the ones taking it upon themselves to fix it. It shouldn't be their victims doing that.
I don't, I don't pretend at all to answer for Don. He's not able to be here. He's not really that good with these type of meetings. But I will say that, when this, when this incident occurred, Don, according to the police report anyway, acknowledged immediately that he knew that he had made a mistake, that his behavior was not, not right. He certainly expressed that to me when I spoke to him the day after when I heard about it. I imagine, I was not part of the fire department. I don't know what happened over there, but I'm sure that there was some conversation, and he may have taken some sort of class. I don't know the answer to that. But I do know that he acknowledged immediately that the behavior was not appropriate. And he has not exhibited any such behavior subsequent to that. And again, I'm not, I'm not advocating for him in this conversation. I'm simply responding to some of the points that you made. Yes, the folks that are here that were, that were part of the Jedi community and part of that particular protest have, have expressed themselves very well with their, their concerns. And Sarah has taken it. Thank you, Susan. You're in line. Susan, Diane, and Sarah took it upon herself today to call me, and we were able to connect Sarah and Mr. Sampson, and they had, it sounds like it was a beginning of a good conversation. So next in line is Wendy wanted to come back again. But I'm not seeing her right now. No? Okay, Chris is shaking.
I mean, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
As Sarah kind of very eloquently expressed, this is, you know, what, I was wondering, what kind of, what kind of reparations, what kind of work has, has Mr. Sampson done to let us know, to gain, regain our trust? I don't trust that. And like Sarah was mentioning, that's a fracturing the community. That's a, that's a, he made a deep rip. That was very scary. We all stayed on that corner the next week to kind of say, you know, to bring the, to bring that community, to help to work to bring the community together, to say that peaceful protests, peaceful, peaceful anything. You know, we are a community. And, you know, the fact that he's an older gentleman, the fact that he's, that, to me, the fact, you know, that doesn't, it doesn't, I don't think it's a good excuse.
It's not an excuse. There's no excuse for that.
And, and, and I don't think that people should be, you know, it's, it's an honor to serve the community. I don't think you should be granted that honor.
Thank you. Next on the line was Adriana.
Hey, everyone. I'm also pretty bad at public speaking, but I'll try my best. So I used to live just, just above Hallie Joe's, right, right in, in front of the corner where the vigil. Can you hear me well?
Yep, I can hear you fine.
Okay. Just across where the vigil always takes place. And when I found out that this incident happened, I was appalled because, I mean, we all can agree that these are just people trying to exercise. because, I mean, we all can agree that these are just people trying to exercise their First Amendment rights. Um, the fact that he swerved at them, that um got out of his vehicle, every decision he took that night, he consciously took it. Um, got out of his vehicle, started uh swearing at them, harassing them verbally, even took that as a sign that someone was actually holding. Um, I find it appalling that a member, a community member that is supposed to be there to help us, like as a member of the fire department. I don't think a person like that with that type of um explosive anger toward people just exercising exercising the First Amendment right, I don't think he has any business being a being part of the uh community leadership. I don't think he has any business. I mean, even if constables, yeah, if they're not having the same role as a police officer, um, like we've said, he's broken trust in the community. I'm appalled at what happened. I um, I mean, I can recall a time, like you say, that there are the people who direct traffic when an accident has happened. There was a very bad accident on Route 80, maybe about two years ago. Um, and I heard it happen. I got out of my vehicle and the first thing I um I I I said is like, does anyone like me a translator, a Spanish speaking person? Because you don't know if the person who got in the accident, you know, speaks English or something. I don't know if what would happen, how would this person act if like a member of our community who happens to be a person of color, happens to be a person who doesn't understand English? How would this person actually react to actually help them if he's trying to to if he acts this way toward uh protest or vigil that doesn't necessarily serve his political purpose? You know what I mean? So that is what concerns me that, yeah, I mean, he might not be a police officer who's carrying a gun or something, but being part of town leadership and government in our community is is really important that the community actually trusts it. So um, I think that's what I have to say so far.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Adriana. Good job. Um, let's see. Susan H. is back up on top of us.
I just wanted to correct for the record something that um Mr. Gates and Mr. McDonald have said. It is not a protest. It's a vigil.
Sorry, sorry, Sarah.
Sorry.
Oh, Susan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's a vigil.
I meant to say, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I said the wrong thing.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Fish, you're up.
Hi, um, to me, it doesn't matter what it's called. It was a lawful gathering. Uh, and I have a question. I I've heard now twice or more that this is a a position which would have this gentleman doing things like directing traffic and special events and parades. Does that same description cover such things as protests and vigils, please? And if it does, I would like everybody to think on that.
Well, I guess the 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 top of my head answer is that um a vigil or a protest that actually goes through the process of getting the proper permits and requires traffic control, yes, that would in fact be a part of that.
Okay, well, that's the the actions of a person who abandoned his vehicle in the middle of an intersection to squelch to squelch what was going on does not strike me as the cool head that's necessary to be able to de-escalate when things do go wrong, which is the whole reason for having them there.
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure everyone understands he is not in a position to de-escalate anything. He's simply there to direct traffic away from away from the area.
Okay, well, then even so, to have somebody in a uniform
Not in a uniform has got to
A position of some authority who not, well, I still have trouble with him being someone who would be vested in helping to take care of an event, such as the one that he interrupted. And I'm I'm being kind when I say interrupted. I'm I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Um, Jane, you are up next. Jane, you might be speaking, but no one can hear you.
Better unmute yourself, Jane. I'm going to take take an opportunity to to jump in here. I uh I I hear a hundred percent what everybody's saying there. I hear what Dwayne said. I hear what Angus has said. And I and I do believe in second chances. I do believe, though, in this time that his actions are not not proper. They're not right. And I have seen that the the vigil, people participating in the vigil have reached out to him. And I agree that I don't know what, if anything, he has done to correct his his thoughts, his his actions. He's gone through any kind of counseling or whatever. So my my opinion is that Mr. Um Donald Sampson be removed from the list tonight uh to be not put on the special constable list. And that if he wants to be on again and has demonstrated um his 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 remorse and 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 if there are, if the fire department, because he is a member of the fire department, if the fire department has has um, you know, courses or recommend courses and he can he can prove to himself prove to himself and others that he is that his actions were wrong, that then he should be, he could be reconsidered at at a later date. But I believe that uh until until he can and I've known him my whole life, like Dwayne and and Jane and all that, I've known him his whole life. And and I and I feel very badly. I never, I don't know, I know him. I don't, I never would have suspected that he would have done something like that. Um, but regardless of regardless of that, I think that he needs to, like anybody that makes a mistake, whether it's be in public office or, you know, I I don't, or even at work or or whatever, you have to you have to prove yourself and and go through some uh some self-analysis and and move on from there. So that's what that's what I would like to see done done this evening. That's my opinion.
Jane, did you uh figure out? Thank you, Jane. Did you figure out how to uh and you've gone from the screen?
Yeah, I don't. Well, there's she is. Okay.
I I'm here, but I I just endorse what Jim said.
Okay, I think that's um that that's that these are all good points. And when we get to that part of the addenda, we will address that. And we can have more of a conversation about it. I appreciate everyone's input. And Adriana is asking about a new message. Fair enough. I agree with you. Yep. Okay. Okay, I'm sure that there are other folks here that want to speak about other things. Now's your chance. Um, Dana's eye. I see Dana's hand up. Oh, did Dana want to keep talking about that? I don't I don't know. But I see Dana's
There you go. Can you hear me?
There you go. Yep.
Hi there.
Dana, have you identified yourself? Because I don't think that you don't have your last name up there.
I'm I'm Dana, um, Lupo Henry. Um, I actually attend many um vigils in the area um and and associated with a couple of groups in Deep River. Um, you know, I think when this happened, at least for me, one of the issues was the lack of accountability. Um, where, you know, we're all asking ourselves now, what has he done? Sarah Herrick asked, what has he done for reparations? Well, nothing was really asked of him. Um, and and that's a concern in and of itself from what I understand. And again, let me be clear, I was not there. Um, but oftentimes I am around that group in similar situations and just kind of kind of heard what went on. But as somebody who has a black child, that's a huge concern. He's not always going to be eight years old. He's going to be a motorist someday. Has anybody reached out or heard from any black community on this and what they feel was a threat? Because as it stands right now, we're a pretty white group sitting around talking about the level of threat and risk um and bias that none of this really affects us. I mean, I'm probably the closest thing to having um a foster, a black foster child who has been um the target of biases in in all four of these surrounding towns here. Um, so I think that we need to step outside of ourselves and consider the black community and not speak for them. I think that communities should organize groups um and and maybe reach out to see how they feel as taxpayers with somebody with such a clear bias. And, you know, he he felt he needed to be threatening. Um, he needed to be intimidating at a peaceful gathering regarding people asking for their lives to matter. Like, that's, we're losing sight of the fact that people were peacefully gathering to merely say, we think you matter, and he didn't appreciate that. That's a huge concern for my family.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, if there is nothing else, no one else that wants to speak, we can certainly move on to the on to the next agenda item. Uh, but this is the this is the public speaking part of the uh the audience of citizens is the public speaking part of the agenda. And we moved it up so that we could all speak before we went through.
Angus?
Yeah.
Um, are we talking about any of the other boards and commissions?
Talking about anything and everything that we want to talk about tonight, Jane. In in my experience in Deep River, uh, which is quite getting longer now, the um this audience of citizens always come at the end of the meeting. Uh, but I thought it was um, I thought it was appropriate for this meeting to have our conversations before. So, yes, we're anything and everything that you want to talk about.
Well, I'd like to talk about Ben Whalen and planning and zoning.
Good.
Um, he is knowledgeable and he makes himself knowledgeable about the uh planning and zoning regulations. He cares deeply about Deep River. And I am also concerned about the fact that when I was on planning and zoning, there were three Republicans. If Ben Whalen as a Republican is removed, that will leave one Republican. So we go to thirty from thirty percent to ten percent. And I really feel that the Republican Party should be represented more fully. I know there are independents on there, but I also feel that there should be Republican representation. And I also feel that Ben is Ben is not warm and fuzzy. And I think that uh some people in Town Hall have been irritated by him. And that is also one of the reasons why he is being removed. And I think it's wrong, and I think his name should be put back on the agenda. He wrote a letter expressing his interest in continuing. And there was also a letter from the Republican Town Committee endorsing him. And I think that that's something that should be attended to because I remember your saying, Angus, at one point that you would join the Democratic Party in Saybrook so that the Democratic Party would put your name forward for some board or commission in which you were interested. And I think that you ought to take seriously when the RTC endorses a candidate.
We do, but thank you. Thank you. Every 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 candidate is taken seriously. And every nomination from any committee is taken seriously. But I appreciate your input. Christie, I think you're next. See you, Suzie. Look at you after Christie.
Okay, um, yes. So I just wanted to also say that I was surprised that Ben wouldn't still be on, especially when I see that there's two vacancies. So if we don't have someone to fill one of the regular and we don't have an alternate and we have someone that's knowledgeable and that frankly researches things ahead of time, um, so do other members. So it's not just Ben. Other members research things ahead of time. But Ben is one that does. Um, and his knowledge of the industry just is very helpful on the committee. I just find it odd for him not to get another term when it seems like so many of our commissions don't have any term limits. So I just I was caught off guard and was a little surprised by that when I heard it. Um, and I I did also look at the math and um I do agree with what Jane said. It it seems odd to only have one Republican on it right now. It it seems like it's a little skewed. So if there's not people ready to go, it just seems odd to me to to ask someone to step down or remove someone when we don't have a full commission.
I appreciate that. That's a that's a good a good point. Um, but there there is there is a couple of things that you said, and I don't want to get into back and forth with everybody. Um, but a couple of points that you made, I want to address. Uh, the first is that um every commission has a time has a term limit. And that's why that that's why the uh agenda is as long as it is tonight because we have to reappoint people from numerous commissions. And if you you will note that there are vacancies on many of those as well. There are, there is only, um, well, I think it's important for, I know it's important for me to say, and I understand and and review the minority representation and representation on every committee before we make appointments and when we make changes to those committees. That said, um, I don't believe that in a small town, uh, Republican, Democrat, independent, Green has a whole lot to do with um anything other than the representation of that party. There's nothing Republican about, that I'm aware of anyway, about whether or not Cumberland Farm goes in, any more than that's a Democratic thing. I think that that party is important and party plays a role in how we populate our commissions. But this commission is not, in fact, um populated in any way that violates any any state or local uh rules.
And Angus, I'm sorry, you're you're correct on the term limits. I just meant we don't seem to limit how many terms everyone can serve is what I meant by that. I I apologize for the verbiage being incorrect.
That's okay. Thanks. Let's see, that was Christie. Sue H. has her hand up. And Dana's next.
I too would like to speak in support of Ben Whalen. Um, I have been to some um planning and zoning meetings, and he is an exceptional member and makes quality uh observations and uh inputs into the into the uh into the goings on of the meeting. And what I'm wondering is, why was he left off the list of people to be reappointed? I mean, it must be something very grievous. I mean, it certainly couldn't be anything personal.
No, it wouldn't be.
No, there must be something horrible that he did. When will that be revealed?
If he had done something horrible, he would have been removed during his term.
I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, we can speak to that um as as the meeting progresses. There are there are
But I just can't believe But I just can't believe there's anything he did that would be that horrible.
I appreciate that. In my estimation, and we can, and the Board of Selectmen will have this conversation. In my estimation, I've watched Ben, or Mr. Whalen over the past five years as a member of the commission. I know this is.
I can't hear you very well. Please speak up.
Volume's down, Angus.
I'm speaking right in front of my microphone. I apologize for that. I'm probably.
Something's happened to your mic.
Lower, I'm sorry. If you could turn your volume up, maybe that would help.
Yeah.
My volume up, and I can't hear anything.
Okay, sorry. And I do see, Gary, that you have a question too, so you're on the list. I don't know how to make that different. Can you hear me at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's low. I don't know. You were louder before, but you're, you're less loud now.
I don't know, and I'm, I might have to type in on another phone because this, this has happened in other meetings, not, not these meetings, thank goodness. The volume just goes out on my, my computer. My reason for, for making this choice is that I've watched over the past six years, Mr. Whalen was very quiet until his last reappointment. I, I don't know that there was ever even more than just a vote in the first three years on this commission. I only observed a couple of times. Three years, two years ago, Mr. Whalen's behavior changed considerably. And that could have been, maybe he's just getting more confidence, I don't know. But that behavior became, in my opinion, and that's the only thing I can speak to, was obstructionist and I would suggest downright rude. Now, there were a number of complaints that came in and got forward to Ben a couple of years ago. But what's most important to me is that Mr. Whalen has chosen, time and again, to refuse, to acknowledge, or accept advice and suggestions and, and review comments from staff and from professional consultants, both engineering and legal. As a result of that, substantial monies have been spent over the past few years to compensate or to, to find answers for Mr. Whalen. I, I just don't think that that questioning staff and professional consultants is, is a place for a member who is not licensed and is not a professional to question that advice. And I, I, I think that the time has come, now is the time. If there was ever a time to change a person on a commission, this is the time, the time of reappointments. We don't want to get into removing someone from, from office. And I'm not certain, although I was certainly advocated for many times. I didn't, I was advocated to many times to remove Mr. Whalen. But shows that this is the right time, and this is the time. And that, that's what my decision, I think.
Have you personally approached?
Can you please let me finish?
Okay.
I think that Dwayne and Jim can have their say. They can do that as part of this comment or part of when the selectmen are discussing this. But you asked a direct question, and I thought I would answer that question from my perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Have I spoken with Mr. Whalen personally? I suggested on more than one occasion that Mr. Whalen and I sit down with a cup of coffee, and I got criticism response.
Okay, thanks.
I did make an effort to try and do that.
Okay, thanks.
Angus, I'll make, Angus, I'll make a comment after the public's finished talking.
Okay, thanks. Dana, I see you were next on the list.
She left the meeting.
Okay.
She had to leave.
Okay, Chris Fish was next. Let's see, Wendy is still here. I don't see.
I think Chris put his hand down.
Okay, great, thank you. Gary Clark was next.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for your time. I have just a quick question. Have, have you discussed this with the other two selectmen before you made this decision? Or is this just solely your decision, sir?
It's my, it's my responsibility to put the list together. The other selectmen have an opportunity to review that list before the agenda is put together.
All right, so, so you haven't, you haven't discussed this with them? I just want to make, I'm asking a question, that's all.
I think there probably have been individual conversations regarding the makeup of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, so you discussed the planning and zoning agenda before, without a town meeting?
We discussed, we discussed, I would suggest that we discussed back and forth all of the appointments that are going on here.
All right, because I thought it was supposed to be public knowledge, that's all. And it was supposed to be discussed at a town meeting.
Well, it's supposed to be discussed at a public meeting, which is what this is. It's not a town meeting.
But, but, so, but you said you discussed it before. That's the only question I have.
Okay. Ben, I see you, and I think Jane is next.
So that's a, so that's a yes, is what I'm asking?
I, I answered you already. I said, yes, we did, in fact, point out, everyone on this, all of the selectmen had an opportunity to review all of the appointments that are being made tonight. As a result of that, there was some conversation. There was no, no real discussion, and there was no decisions made. There cannot be any decisions.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Let's see, Kristi Stroud, you're going to come on after Jane. Oh, no, Ben is after Jane, and then Kristi will be next after you, after Ben. Go ahead, Jane.
I'm going to be extremely blunt, Angus. I think you are getting rid of Ben for the same reason you got rid of me. Because we did not fall in line with your desires and your agenda, period.
Okay, well, I take exception to that. I think that that is absolutely inaccurate. I understand that everyone is welcome to their own opinion. I do not have an agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Excuse me, I'd like to speak.
Other than, I'm responding to Jane, thank you. Other than to request professional behavior and behavior that will not, in fact, endanger the community. And I saw behavior from both you and from Ben that was more personal and what I consider selfish than, than keeping the community in mind. And that's why I've made my decision. But, you know, this is the Board of Selectmen's decision, not mine solely. And that's why we're here. So thank you. Ben, go ahead.
Yeah, Angus, you made a lot of accusations. I would have to disagree with you. There were some conversations, and you haven't provided examples. We did go through some of this, and I'm not going to tie everybody up. But one thing I will say is, you bring up professionalism. I would have to say that one of these complaints, I will tell everybody, that you sat on for three months, and I had no idea that that complaint came in, and you called me about that complaint because you wanted us to vote for something. And then it was brought up to my attention, and it was then brought up that you'd been sitting on it for three months. Now, when I actually had a conversation with that applicant later on, that complaint, he said he had no knowledge of what I talked to him about, and this was something you sat on. So basically, you know, I find it very offensive and unprofessional on your end to make statements here that you cannot back up, and I have facts.
I'm happy to back it up, Ben. I've got all the documentation in my office.
Okay.
If it's mine, then we can have that conversation.
We're, we're not going to hold this conversation now and tie people up. But, you know, when you're going to call somebody unprofessional, you know, there, there were issues that caused those issues. And, and to sit on something for three months when there's a complaint sitting about somebody, which was a false complaint, and I've talked to that person after the fact, and they said that they did not have an understanding, is, is basically where I'll leave that right there. I, I would say that, that the statements that you made are not factual statements, that there's proof in everybody's way that this is obviously not the time to sit here and discuss this. I don't have my information, but these things have been vetted. But when you say that there's thousands of dollars being spent, there's no proof of that. There, there's no proof of that in other things. So we, we already went through this, and I'm going to leave it there. I, I thank other people in the commission for supporting me, and, and I thank the time that I did have there. And that's where I'll leave it.
You sat on a complaint about me for the same three months until you called me in and you wanted to talk about the vote that you wanted. And that's when you brought up the complaint.
Angus, you are unprofessional. You. I wrote, you.
Dana, I'm happy to respond to you. I can talk to Susan after she, she calms down and stops interrupting what I think is a pretty productive conversation. Ben, I appreciate what you said. I am happy. And I, I've never unextended my invitation to you to come in and have a conversation, have a cup of coffee, and see how we can get on the same page about something. That has not happened. You have not responded at all. I've got documentation for everything that I just said, and I've got documentation for other things that I did not say. I'm happy to have that conversation with you. Jane, I will respond to what you just said, which is the same thing that Dana just said. I'm going to tell you point blank, that is a false statement. I did not give you that complaint immediately because I didn't know exactly what to do with those things. I was relatively new to the job. I asked the town attorney. We determined that was the best thing to do was to talk to you. I did not ask you to come in and look at this complaint because I want you to vote. I have no interest and I have no authority to try and influence how the Planning and Zoning Commission votes. I simply was trying to ensure that you knew that you had complaints about your behavior before you went to a meeting. You were asked by me and by the Planning and Zoning Commission's attorney to refuse yourself from a, from a meeting because you had exhibited behavior that indicated there might be bias in your decision. You chose not to do that. Then another complaint came in after that decision. So I am really tired of folks around this table throwing things at me that are simply not accurate, and it's time for me to start responding to them, and, and I'm going to start responding to them. That was a blatantly false statement, Jane, and you are aware of that. You are not, you're not a foolish person.
You followed me to the door wanting to talk about the vote that you wanted. And I said, "I've got to ride my horse. I am leaving." I remember very clearly.
That is not my recollection. I might have walked you to the door because you were in your way out. I did not want to talk to you about a vote. I wanted to talk to you about whether or not you should refuse yourself. You had, you were requested by me, you were requested by the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and you were, you were advised by the, by the Planning and Zoning Commission's attorney that it was the wisest thing to do. You chose.
And I contacted my own attorney as well.
You chose to ignore that. You were not required to do that. But it exhibited behavior that puts your own interests above the community's. And that's, that's, that's where the end of that. Scott, I see you. I'll, I'll get to you after Susan has her chance to.
And I see Bruce has his hand up also.
Bruce too, okay, thank you.
Who's, who's next?
I have, I have Kristi Stroud, who's next?
Yeah, I just had a quick thing, but I can wait. Other people haven't gotten to talk, so.
Go ahead, you, you were in line.
Okay, no, I just wanted to, like, real quick on it, saying, one, I think it's our job sometimes to question people. Like, obviously respectfully, but I think it's our, our job to question some things. Otherwise, we wouldn't need the commission, right? And then the next, only last comment I have, and I might have to go put people to bed, is last time, it seems to me, there was controversy on someone on, at least this committee. It went to a vote, and we let the town decide. So I would just say, if, since there are vacancies and they're not being filled, that would be my opinion, is we wouldn't have just three people decide. We would, we would allow the town to make a decision like we did last time.
This will go through a vote, but, but the vote is after an appointment is made. And it is, the appointing body is the Board of Selectmen. So we'll see, we'll see where the Board of Selectmen goes with that. Thank you, Kristi. And I hope we get some snow so we can get up to the map. Susan, you were next. You have to unmute yourself, please.
Oh, okay. I was just saying that you have been unprofessional. I wrote you a letter, and I copied your lawyer, and you never replied to me.
I don't think there was anything to reply in. I remember the letter and basically made a bunch of statements to me. There was no questions or any, any reason for a reply. I'm happy to have a conversation with you whenever you like.
You know, I, if you read my letter.
I have, I have, I have, my office door is almost always open.
Look, all I can tell you is what I saw. You roll your eyes. You're, you're just unprofessional, unprofessional. I'm sorry. That's the way I see it.
Thank you. Bruce, you were next. You need to unmute yourself.
How dare you tell other people they are unprofessional when you yourself?
Bruce, you're next.
Thank you. I hate confrontations.
As do I.
Things have been a little contentious. I do feel I need to make some comments about Mr. Whalen's behavior. And I think there were some people on the Planning and Zoning Commission who are new or newer and are unaware of some of the track record of things that have gone on. And I think there are townspeople that are unaware of some of the things that are going on. And I think that's probably right, trying to take care of things in-house. And I don't think everything has to be aired in public. But I think there's been a very strong track record by Ben Whalen of being an obstructionist. Things of showing basic dishonesty and being unethical. The town has incurred cost legal fees of thousands of dollars from Mr. Whalen. He was told by the Planning and Zoning attorney that the person who should be contacting him, the attorney, is the chair, not other people. Mr. Whalen has had his attorney, his personal attorney, making contacts with the Planning and Zoning Commission attorney. Those fees were then passed on to the town at a planning and zoning meeting. When we were going over bills, it was asked if anybody recognized who that lawyer was and what this bill for thousands of dollars was. Mr. Whalen suddenly couldn't remember that that lawyer was his lawyer and that those fees were attributable to his actions. That's unconscionable. I think there's going to be more litigation coming up in the town if he were to stay. I've got all kinds of paperwork that I have kept as records of things that Mr. Whalen has made comments to try to stop activities in town by throwing all kinds of things at the wall in a machine gun manner and to see what would stick, never, never supplying any documentation to back up his comments. Finally, after several requests, I know as the chair of Planning and Zoning, I had to go into the record, listen to the tapes, and pull out the information myself as a public record, and then spend several days going through the regulations to find out that mostly what he was saying was inaccurate at best. And I cannot, I think it's about time that Mr. Whalen found another activity besides planning and zoning. Yes, I think we should have better representation across the different political parties. And it would be nice if people would step forward. I know you and other people have tried to get people in town to step forward to serve on commissions. And if people don't step forward, it doesn't matter what their political affiliation is. If you don't get people to step forward who can do the job, then so be it. That's it.
Thanks, Bruce. Scott, I think I see G.I. Joe with a hand up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, just, just a couple, couple of quick things. I know the, the RTC did talk about Ben's reappointment a few months back, and we did endorse him for reappointment. And I know, I realize that the final decision is up to you three. I have spoke in depth with, with the chairman of the Planning and Zoning. And he, I mean, as far as I know, and I do have his blessing tonight to, to come on the meeting and say this. He would like Ben to remain as his vice chairman. He thinks Ben does fantastic work. They work well together. So I mean, I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, politics aside, you know, when a chairman works well with a vice chairman, that's going to make the whole, the, the whole board work that much smoother. And. And that's all for me tonight. I wish I had more to say.
Thank you, Scott. We'll get we'll get you another time when you do.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Um, Ben, you're next.
Yeah, I would just like to comment um uh once again, Bruce, um, you you know, I appreciate what you're saying, but once again, there's some falsities in in your statements. Uh, my lawyer contacted the P and Z attorney when you had actually done something illegal and actually had paperwork that was about me that you refused to turn over. So we could go through this list day in and day out, but what we really should be doing is not focusing on that. There there are other things about legal fees you're exaggerating. We've all looked over the paperwork. You racked up thousands and thousands of dollars talking to the P and Z attorney when you had no authority. I know of the charges that that I did rack up, which were under a thousand dollars at the last bills that were there. So I mean, we could go through this time and time again, but let's not talk about false things. And let's talk about professionalism. You and another member are both officers of the commission disappeared for four months without notifying the commission, telling anyone you were acting chairman. I had to fill in as vice chairman. There were no notes. There were no calls. There were nothing. You were gone, nonexistent. There were no issues with me filling in. I filled in. The commission worked well. There were no problems. There were no legal fees. So there's two sides to every story that that basically this isn't the place to air these things, that that it's a one-sided argument. And and I do not appreciate that. If you wanted to have a conversation with me about that, there was a time and a place. But but those are falsities, and I do not stand for people throwing falsities my way. Thank you.
Okay, Ben. Ben, thank you very much for that comment. Um, I see Bruce has got his hand up, and I want to just say something. Most of the emails between the two of you were um I was copied on. And uh, there was ample opportunity for conversation to take place on both sides. And uh, and you did not respond to to any of those invitations that I saw. I and I was not, I was only being copied on them. I was not participating in them. Bruce, your hand is up. I don't see any other hands up. I don't see.
Doug, just 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 very quickly, um. I hate this back and forth stuff, but everything that Ben is saying, um, any fees that came about by having go to the attorney was my job, my sole responsibility to contact the planning and zoning attorney when there was business that needs to address to him. And many of the times, most of the costs that came up were attributable to actions by Mr. Whalen. And that's that's just the end of that. And everything I have got paperwork to back things up where he refused to ever have a discussion on some of these issues, never would come up. And I tried, and I've got emails that show multiple attempts to try to get him to into a conversation, and he would just ignore me. And I with that, I am done.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else asking to speak.
Gary has a question, says.
Gary has a question. Sorry, I I'm not very good at keeping up with the chats. Gary, go ahead.
That's all right. Thank you very much, Angus. Um. Bruce, I do remember quite a few times that it came up about the attorney fees and I guess the regulations were saying that you were in charge of them, but Angus was saying that he he can only contact the attorney or something. Is that true?
No, you misunderstood that and I'll.
Yeah, I I I'm asking Bruce. I'm not asking you, sir.
This is not a dialogue that goes back and forth, Gary. This is a public comment to the board of selection.
It's not back and forth. I'm just asking a simple question, sir.
And I and I think the suggestion that we would do is to send a note to Bruce or give Bruce a call. This is not the place for back and forth between the public.
Right, well, it's.
I I can answer the question.
Mr. Whalen's credibility.
I can answer the question if you would like it answered. If you would like to argue, we can do that, sir.
No, I'm not arguing. I'm just asking. It it came up about Mr. Whalen's credibility. That's the only reason I'm asking.
Your question, if I'm if I remember correctly, your question had to do with who was authorized to contact the attorney. That question is answered, was answered by Bruce earlier, and I think Ben uh may or may not agree with it, but the answer is that the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission is who has the authorization, usually through a vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, so so that means that any money that was spent.
Certainly, the the only time that I have any contact with the with the uh Planning and Zoning Commission's attorneys is when um we are involved in a lawsuit and the town has to um prepare for that lawsuit.
All right, so that means any money that was spent, Bruce knows about. That's all.
In the end, but not Bruce did not authorize the um attorney to be speaking with Mr. Whalen.
Well.
Nor with Mr. Whalen's attorney.
Then why didn't it happen?
Because Mr. Whalen contacted the attorney. The attorney replied.
Well, the the attorney knows he's not supposed to speak to Mr. Whalen.
All right. Okay.
Well, that wasn't the answer. I'm just asking for the answer.
Yeah, I I didn't. I I gave you the answer that I knew. Is there anyone else?
Angus, I'm gonna jump in.
Yep.
I've been a selectman now for four years. When I came on, the Planning and Zoning has been a hotbed for four years. And it's draw it's it's divided this community drastically. It seems like every year we come up to appointments, there's fights, there's battles. Um, we make one step forward and we go two or three steps backwards. Um, Mr. Whalen, is he our our model citizen? Um, probably not. As Sarah Herrick said earlier, uh, we've all made mistakes in our lives. I think Mr. Whalen has made several mistakes in his life. But you can't take away his enthusiasm enthusiasm for the town, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and what he stands for. We hear all sides. Planning and zoning is not one of my strengths. I've said that before. I will say it again. Working on town budgets, working on our taxes and the mill rate is my strength, which I care deeply about that. Planning and zoning um is very important for our community, but it's not one of my strengths. So I try to keep an arm's distance away. So there's always three sides to the story. There's left side, the right side, and the truth that's in between. I'm not on a day-to-day basis. I don't think Jim is. It's it's Angus and the rest of the people that are on a day-to-day with the planning and zoning. I can ramble on. Um, we we know what we have with Ben. Again, is he the model citizen? Yes and no. Again, we we all have our strengths and we all have our faults. I have plenty of them, and I know that. But I I would like to make probably two two case scenarios. One, put him on tonight and let it go to a town meeting like we did with Kathy Jefferson and let the taxpayers vote it. Or two, um, we leave him off tonight. Um, we leave that vacant spot, the three of us, Angus, Jimmy, myself, and Mr. Whalen, have a sit down and try to air out some of his dirty laundry and figure out if he's the proper guy to move forward. Um, but we have to, we have to try to get this planning and zoning back on track for the betterment of our community because we we are just constantly fighting and and it's it's not good for our community. So I uh that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Jane. I I don't disagree with you, um, except for one thing you said. You you said to take one step forward and two or three steps back. I don't think that's the case. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission is moving in the right direction. I think we have a good chair. We've got a good core group of people. Um, but I do think I I do think that this is in fact the right decision, and this is not a decision that was made overnight. This is a decision that has been um been on my mind for three years. Um, and I I do want to also say that um what Bruce said uh just a minute ago, what Sarah said when she began. These are decisions that are not taken lightly. These are decisions that are considered and considered and considered. You could speak to um Gina. You could speak to Joyce. You could speak to my wife. I take way too long to come to some of these decisions. Um, but this is a decision that was made. I cannot stand the confrontation that comes up around this planning and zoning commission. But it is my job, my job that I was elected to do. Um, and the jo- and your job and Jim's job to do what we think is right based on what we know. Um, this is this is why we are where we are. And um and and I don't think that we're, I don't think we're moving backwards. I think we're moving forward. I just think this.
When I when I may, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Angus, but when I say moving backwards, it's backwards with the controversy.
Yep. Oh, yeah, I get I get it.
That's that's again, the zoning commission, we we finally have some great zoning enforcement officers that just got us a beautiful grant for our town that the public should hear. What a great job they did and are well worth the money. I mean that the back Angus as the arguments that.
Yeah, no, I get it.
That we constantly have. And again, it it puts me against you, me against Jimmy, Jimmy against, we're we're splitting up, arguing amongst ourselves that we shouldn't have to. Um, and that's what I'm saying. It it's tiring for for myself. And and I'm, you know, you're you're more involved than I am and Jim is, but it's very tiring for for all of us to be constantly battling over these issues.
You're a hundred percent correct about that. I agree with you one hundred percent. Susan H, you have one more comment to make.
But yes, I do. I agree with Dwayne's suggestion that we put Ben back on the list. But my other point is Angus, maybe you should recuse yourself since you have um something that's come up at the P and Z. And I think that's when uh Ben was very active because he was really vocally against what you had come up for, which was a parking lot uh on River Street. And I think that that might have upset you that, you know, he had some very, very cogent points on that matter. And so I think you should recuse yourself in this matter.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Once, twice. Here we go. Okay, um, public comments are closed, and we can go back to the agenda as uh as it is now ordered. Um, the next item on the agenda will be to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, the next item, item three, is to approve the selection uh twenty twenty one board of selection meeting schedule. You guys had an opportunity to review that. Did you see any conflicts or anything that we need to revise?
No.
If not, we can take a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the uh the uh meeting schedule for twenty twenty one as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and now we come to appointments. Um, why don't we take this one at a time because we've got a couple of spots that we're going to have to have some conversation about?
Yep.
Um. Yeah, but.
I I make a motion that for the Community Health Committee, they're two-year terms. That um the appointments Nancy Howard, term to expire twelve one twenty twenty two. Don Norton, same term to expire twelve one twenty twenty two. Michael H. Tomlinson, same term expired twelve one twenty twenty two. And Michael A. Spanner, uh, term to expire also twelve one twenty twenty two.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission, uh, we have a three-year term.
Yeah, I'll make the like to make a motion for John Wodovick. I'm sorry if I pronounce it wrong, uh, for a term to expire twelve one twenty twenty three. And we have two vacancies.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, constables. Why don't we take constables and special constables separately?
Make a motion that uh for regular constables, one-year term, Benjamin Paul DeCarrosta, term to expire twelve one twenty twenty one. Christopher Reed, same term to expire twelve one twenty twenty one. And Matthew Ward, term to expire twelve one twenty twenty one.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
On the special constables, I'd like to make a motion for Howard Beardsley, uh, Jerry F. Clark Senior, John E. Ely, Robert L. Jenkins, Jonathan Kastner, Mark Piscatetti, and Donald R. Sampson, all terms to expire twelve one twenty twenty one.
Um, we need a second to uh to have a conversation about that. And I don't have.
Yeah, I'll I'll second it so we can open up for the conversation.
I am. Well, I I I am not comfortable with um taking a man who's who's put most of his life into working for our community and 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 telling him no, he can no longer do that because of uh of of one particular incident incident that uh none of us agree with. Um, I do think that given the response that we had tonight, it might be appropriate to take to to ask you to um to amend your motion to remove Don from this particular position now, and we can continue the conversation, have another another um another conversation about this um at a later date.
I I would I would also add that um I I believe that he is a member of the Fire Police for the Fire Department, which is a a separate duty in itself of of, you know, beyond the special constable. So this this is strictly for the special constable.
Um, correct.
I and I believe that unless the Fire Department does something to the contrary, he will remain as a fire policeman. And 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 like I said before, I think that I I've known Don Sampson a long time. The I hope that he made a mistake, you know, I hope that he, you know, he he said the wrong thing, he did the wrong thing, and he can get, he can go out and get some prove like a lot of the people that spoke tonight can prove that he he has, he has changed his ways. He's he's taken a course. He's he's done some sensitivity training or whatever. But I I would agree that I I think that that he should, for the near term, he should not be on the list in that if he can prove via whatever means verbally and or with uh with actions that he be, he could re- reapply, or we could reconsider him at a future date.
I want to um, I want to comment on that a little bit, and um I do think that a further conversation is important. Uh, but I want to, I want to make sure that everyone is aware. Um, this was one incident over the course of over fifty years um of 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 work.
Absolutely.
This incident took place almost two and a half years ago at this point. Um, and this incident, uh, and there has been no occurrence of anything similar to this since then. Um, and I think that uh I I think that it's um I I don't know when we say, what has he done to 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 uh to deserve redemption? Um, I think we I would hope that we live in a society where people can in fact um be forgiven and be redeemed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And and I think that his behavior over the past two and a half years is one of the things that we can say. Um, that we can say uh he has in fact changed his behavior or 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 been able to control his behavior. Uh, so I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we happen um that we uh that we do this, that we put him back on this right now. I'm asking Dwayne to in fact remove that. But this is two and a half years ago. He has been a special constable that whole time. We've had no other incidents. So I think we need to to consider um, you know, a little bit more than just uh just react to uh to how we're going to move forward. So if you would amend that, if you would amend that, Dwayne.
I'm gonna I'm gonna amend my motion there for the Constable Special Constables. Um, again, I'd like to appoint Howard Beardsley, Jerry F. Clark Senior, John E. Ely, Robert L. Jenkins, Jonathan Kastner, Mark Piscatetti, all terms to expire twelve one twenty twenty one.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, okay. Next is Design Advisory Board.
I uh make a motion uh for the Design Advisory Board to your terms. Lea Balducci, term to expire, all all these will twelve one twenty twenty one. Daniel Bat, Michael A. Cole, and Jeffrey D. Hostetler.
I'll second it.
Jim?
Jim? The rest are, except for Lee, the rest are 12-0, 2022.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll amend the motion. Lee Valducci, term to expire 12-1, 2022. Thank you, Joyce. Daniel Bat, 12-1, 2022. Michael A. Cole, 12-1, 2022. And Jeffrey D. Hostetler, 12-1, 2022. Thanks again, Joyce.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to an Economic Development Committee for a three-year term. Peter Lewis, Jill Larson, both terms to expire 12-1, 2023.
Second. Excuse me, I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Fire Commissioners, I make a motion for the Board of Fire Commissioner, six-year term. We have one, one gentleman, John Doobie, term to expire 12-1, 2026.
Make a motion, or second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For the Housing Authority, five-year term. Lisa M. Brube, term to expire 2-1, 2026.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I would, and, 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 in, in the theme of the special constable, I make a motion, the Park and Recreation Commission, three-year term. And a period, yeah, they're all 12-1, 2023. Dave Baratus, Miriam K. Morrissey, and four vacancies.
Five.
Five, if you're not going to nominate one.
Well, yeah, without, yeah, there'll be five vacancies.
I'll second it.
Just for discussion's sake, I, you know, you've made, you've made the nomination. I'm not going to argue with that, but I am going to argue, I don't believe that's appropriate. I do, I do in fact believe that this is a situation that happened almost two and a half years ago. I think people need to pay attention to, you know, we talk about, you know, behavior and how people act. This man has worked for this community for 50 years. I, I believe that, that he, for 50 years minus 20 minutes, he behaved, he has behaved appropriately. I know that other folks don't agree with that, but I don't think that, I don't think it's appropriate for us to, to hold a man to, to something that he has, he has obviously, obvious to me because I had a conversation with him. Public discussion is done. I, and we're not going to, we're not going to, we're not, you've already expressed yourselves. This is the time for the Board of Selectmen to discuss themselves. And I'm expressing myself. Donnie Sampson, I don't agree with him politically in any way, but I also know that he, he is a good man and he, and he puts his community first. He made a mistake. He acknowledged that mistake. And I don't believe that, that him being on Parks and Recreation is a negative thing. But you guys have made the motion. I'm not going to ask you to revise it. I think we should, we'll bring this up again.
There is a motion and a second.
Yep. Oh, yeah, all those in favor? Sorry about that.
Aye.
Thank you.
Planning and Zoning, three-year term. Alan Perdis, regular, term to expire 12-1, 23. I would like to make the motion, or looking for a motion to add Ben Whalen, term to expire 12-1, 2023, and a vacancy on that board as an alternate.
We can have a second and a conversation. I will ask you to amend that. Or actually, I will ask you to, to remove that and take these separately. If you want to, if you want to put Ben on there, then we should vote on them separately.
Okay, so you want me just to go what's, what's printed in front of us?
If you want to make a motion to put Ben on, on that, I think we should take them individually because I will-
Okay, no, I understand, I understand now. Okay. I'll amend my motion. I'd like to make a motion for Planning and Zoning, three-year term, for Alan Perdis, term to expire, term to expire 12-1, 2023.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to amend the Planning and Zoning, three-year term, and I would like to add Ben Whalen as a regular, term to expire 12-1, 2023.
For the purpose of discussion, I will second that.
I want to just make one comment about our friend Susan, Susan H., who has just determined that I should refuse myself. I, I think that we could, we could go beyond, beyond the, the application that my wife and I made to the, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We withdrew that application. I was not, I was never at any of those meetings. I did not participate in any of those meetings. And I have no idea who said or did what. I don't, I didn't think that was appropriate for me to be doing that. And I'm not, it is my job in fact to appoint people and, and this is, I'm going to continue on this, to do so and to vote on this decision.
All right, well, I guess it's, it's my turn and when I, before I, I got on the Board of Selectmen, I threw my hat in the ring for Planning and Zoning and almost immediately realized at that time what a, what a, what a group that was. It was, it's, it was very dysfunctional and I almost immediately regretted my, my, my decision or my, my request to be on there. At the same time, Bill Burdick decided for personal and health reasons to step back from his, his Republican selectmen seat and, and I was approached to fill that and, and I did. I, I attended a lot of meetings, not a lot. I, this, a lot of the angst and conflict was prior to, to my being on the Board of Selectmen. There was a lot of it that was apparent on the, the term right after I got on. And I have, you know, I've, I've talked to, I've talked to Bruce and, and his, he and his wife, their decision not to, not to attend the meeting. That's, that was a decision that they made, was it right, wrong, or whatever, but it indicated to me that there was mass dissension in there to the point where they were very discouraged, yet they did not, they did not resign. And again, that's, that's, that's an instant that has happened. You know, this, we, we are all, board members and, and selectmen and all that, we're all here to try and get along and do what's best for the town. And, and I believe that, that obstructionism and conflict is, is almost first nature for Ben. I'm, I'm sorry to, if that offends Ben, if he's still here, I haven't looked at the thing, but that's, that's my, my opinion. I've talked to, you know, I talked to, to Bruce, I've talked to the town's attorney about a, you know, an incident that happened with him and her. I just, I just don't have a good feeling. I know Ben has a lot of building experience and he needs, and he's, he's, he's passionate about it, but there's, in my opinion, I'm, I'm not a conflict person, I'm a compromise person or a, I want to, I want to try, I got on this board to try and do what's best for the town. And, and I believe that the Planning and Zoning Commission and all the commissions should strive to that thing. And, and as Angus alluded to, we, as the Board of Selectmen, are elected to, to try and populate these commissions with the best quality, best qualified, best people to represent, we hope they represent themselves, the board and the town, the taxpayers of, and the citizens of the town of Deep River. And when, there are a lot of new people on the board and, and with, with the, with the, with the reappointments coming up, things have quieted down. Whether that's going to be the norm for the, for the foreseeable future or if it'll, it'll resume to past, past performance where the planning and zoning didn't, didn't function very well, I, I just, I'm just personally not comfortable at this point with, with proceeding with, with Mr. Ben Whalen. So that is, that is my opinion at the, at this present time.
Dwayne, anything else?
The only thing, I'll go back to what I suggested earlier on. Let the townspeople vote for it and take some of the anxiety away from us three selectmen or we don't want to appoint him tonight. We have a sit down with Mr. Whalen in the coming months after the new year and, you know, reevaluate it, relook at it. But those are my, my options. I have nothing more.
And as I said earlier, I have, have attempted to, to speak with Ben face to face, but I am absolutely always open to, to continuing the conversation and I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion for Ben Whalen, term to expire 12-1, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Town Hall Auditorium?
Make a motion, Town Hall Auditorium Management Committee, one-year terms. So I don't make this mistake again. 12-1, 2021 for all of them. Carol, Carol Jones, Sarah Fika, I believe.
Yep.
Little Lynn Schmelzer, and two, two vacancies.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion for the Veterans Green Monument Committee, two-year term. William L. Burdick, Richard Naggett, Eileen Richard, terms to expire 12-1, 2022.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, Water Pollution Control Authority nominate three-year terms and all, no, they're, they're ones different. George Eckenrock, term to expire 12-1, 2023. James M. Jake, term to expire 12-1, 2023. Nicholas Cornacki, term to expire 12-1, 2022. And Edward S. Sedgwick, term to expire 12-1, 2023.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Zoning Board of Appeals, three-year term. Jerome Ackerman, William E. Harris, and a vacancy. All terms to expire 12-1, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will need to arrange for a town meeting to confirm or validate the Community Health Committee, the Planning and Zoning nominations and the appointments and the Zoning Board of Appeals appointments. So given these times, I mean, you know, we actually are going to need to, we're going to need to, to figure out how to have a town meeting. And I'll be phased back to phase 2.1.
And it could go further than that.
It could go further than that. We'll see where the numbers bring us. But we will, we'll try to arrange for something so we can have that meeting and have a conversation and have a vote. I'm not sure yet and we're trying to, trying to work with the state on instructions on how to do that. The other question I have, and it's not on the agenda, so we can't make a decision about it right now, but I, I'm thinking that, that it's probably appropriate right now as much as I don't want to do that, to, to end our, our foray into the hybrid meetings with in-person and, and remote. I just, I think that's, I don't know, we're not there yet, but I think we're going to probably be limiting access to the town hall, to appointments only. At this point, we still are open, but we just have to see what, what kind of guidance we get from the state and from our, our health districts.
I would agree with that, yes.
For the time being, I think I'm going to ask all of our commissions to, to revert back to just, just remote. Okay, and it's not as much fun, that's for sure. I would prefer to have everybody here and speaking with everybody in person, but it does make it, make it easy for folks to participate and that's positive. And along those lines, Dwayne, you mentioned it earlier, we were in fact awarded that Steve Grant for our open government request, which will, which will make it much easier and much more efficient for folks to participate remotely and, and better, and better for, for when, even when times do get back to as normal as we can call them, we will be able to, people will be able to see and to hear and, and all of that, so see better. Also, we'll have new electronic signs around and, and a GIS system. It's a, it's a great grant and we're very, very happy that we were awarded that.
All right.
So thank you, everyone, for, for your participation tonight. Deep River and what we love about America, we can all get our voices heard. I'll have a motion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. That was probably the longest selection.
Yep. All right.
Stay safe and healthy.
Good night, everybody. Be, be well.
Thank you.